First, we will do some key points revisit. Key points revisit. Why we are discussing Chinese reminder theorem? Why we are discussing Chinese reminder theorem? In session number one, we discussed what do you mean by dividend, divisor, quotient and reminder? Reminder one, numerator is divided by denominator. In session number three, I gave a flow chart. I will repeat this flow chart. Then you will come to know what is the drawback. When the denominator is a composite number. When the denominator, it is a composite number. If the denominator, it is a composite number. If the denominator, if it is a composite number. First, we will try to solve the problem using negative reminder. We will try to solve the problem using negative reminder. Not all the problems, we will get the answer fast using negative reminder. Then we will use Euler's theorem. Then we will use Euler's theorem. Then we will use Euler's theorem. But even if Euler theorem fails, then we have to go to Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. Everybody knows what is Chinese reminder theorem. Only thing you do not know that it is Chinese reminder theorem. Even from our fifth class, sixth class, seventh class textbook, we have discussed the application part of it. But we did not knew that the name of the theorem is Chinese reminder theorem. Now, why we are discussing Chinese reminder theorem? For example, if I take a question. For example, if I take a question. Let me see if I take this question. Suppose if it is there. This question is there. Three power hundred and one divided by seventy seven. Let me see what will happen if I use Euler's theorem. Let me see what will happen if I use Euler's theorem. Euler's theorem is used when the denominator, it is a composite number. Seventy seven is seven into eleven, seven into eleven. So, the quotient function of seventy seven is n into one minus one by P one. I will discuss in the next class why it is one minus one by P one. For everything, there is a proof sir. It is one minus one by eleven, one minus one by eleven. Seventy seven cancel, it is sixty. So, if I apply Euler's quotient function, this is nothing but three power sixty divided by seventy seven. It is one. So, if it is sixty, even for the multiples of sixty, three power one twenty divided by seventy seven, it is one. Three power one twenty divided by seventy seven. Which value we require? Three power hundred and one, we require. Three power nine into three power one divided by seventy seven is one. Now, if you observe here, this is what we require it. Doing this one, three power nine divided by seventy seven. Try to find out whether the reminder is plus one or minus one. Three square is nine, three cube is twenty seven, three power four is eighty one. So, writing it as three power four whole square, isn't it very complicated? Three power four whole square into three power one into X divided by seventy seven equal and two one. These, all these steps, it will take a little more time than the usual time. In the previous problems, it is a very simple equation. Just by looking at the equation, we got the answer. But for some numbers, it is if the quotient function of the denominator, it is sixty. What is the multiple of sixty? One twenty. What is it given in the question? Hundred and one. Is hundred and one close to the quotient function of denominator or its multiples? Definitely no. Again, I am repeating. Tocean function of seventy seven is sixty. Sixty, two times it is one twenty. Two times it is, in fact, it is nineteen. It is nineteen, it is not even. Three power nineteen divided by one seventeen. Three power four into three power three. A lot of calculation it is taking. I hope it is clear. So, this is the drawback of, please make a note, there is a calculation mistake. It is three power nineteen. First, make a note sir. First, make a note. First, make a note. We will see what is the drawback unless we write down the drawback of Euler's theorem. We will not be able to appreciate Chinese reminder theorem. Euler's theorem. Euler's theorem. Euler's theorem. If the question is of the form, A power X divided by N equal and two one. A power X divided by N equal and two one. If X is closer to, if X is closer to quotient function of N. If X is closer to quotient function of N, are its multiples? Are its multiples? Tocean function of N, are its multiples of quotient function of N? Then Euler theorem is used effectively. Euler's theorem. Euler's theorem is the best method. Euler's theorem, it is the best method. If the power of the numerator, if the power of the numerator is closer to phi of N or multiples of phi of N. Please make a note of it sir. If the power of the numerator, if the power of the numerator is not closer to the quotient function of denominator. It might take a little more time. It might take a little more time. Finding out which power of numerator by denominator gives you plus one or minus one. That is the complexity in negative reminder. If the power of the numerator, if the power of the numerator, if the power of the numerator is not closer to the quotient function of denominator or its multiples. Then Euler's method is ineffective. The effect, the power of Euler's theorem only lies if the power of numerator, it is closer to quotient function of denominator or multiples of quotient function of denominator. Please make a note sir. Please make a note, I am doing the arrow above. If the denominator, it is a composite number. Just to look at the question. If the denominator, it is a composite number. Step number one, apply negative reminder. Step number two, negative reminder is not helping me to solve first. Then use step number two, Euler's theorem. If the power of numerator is not nearer to the quotient function of denominator or its multiples. Then use Chinese reminder theorem. Then use Chinese reminder theorem. Now, we will see in detail what is Chinese reminder theorem. What is Chinese reminder theorem? Very, very important theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. The first thing is, Chinese reminder theorem is used when the denominator is a composite number. If the denominator is a composite number. If the denominator, it is a composite number, then Chinese reminder theorem is used. Chinese reminder theorem is used when the denominator, it is a composite number. Denominator, it is a composite number. Write down the composite number. Write the composite number as a product of, as a product of co-prime numbers. As a product of co-prime numbers. If the denominator, if it is a composite number, Chinese reminder theorem states. Write the number as a product of co-prime numbers. As a product of co-prime numbers. If you can write composite number as a product of co-prime numbers, then this method is the efficient method. Now, square of a prime number. Square of a prime number. You take a prime number and square it. Square of a prime number cannot be expressed. Cannot be expressed as a product of co-primes. Square of a prime number cannot be expressed as a product of co-primes. That is the demerit of Chinese reminder theorem. That is the demerit of Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. The first thing is, where the Chinese reminder theorem will be used? Chinese reminder theorem helps us in eliminating, helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options. It is a beautiful method where you can eliminate incorrect answer options. Helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options. Helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options. Please make a note of it. Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem is used, step number one, when the denominator, it is a composite number. The utility of Chinese reminder theorem is only when the denominator, it is a composite number. Write the composite number as a product of co-primes. As a product of co-primes. Now, the question arises. Can every number composite number, can it be written as product of co-primes? No. A square of a prime number cannot be written as a power of a prime number, co-prime numbers. Nine, in how many ways can you write nine? One into nine, three into three. Three and three, HCF it is three. What do you mean by co-prime numbers? Co-prime numbers, HCF is always one. HCF is always one. HCF is always one. Square of a prime number, three square, five square, seven square, eleven square. P square, P into P. HCF of P comma P, it is P. So, therefore, Chinese reminder theorem, probably it will not be best method to solve the problems if that, when the denominator, it is a composite number. And the composite number is a square of a prime number. And it is a square of an prime number. Extremely important point, any student who is preparing for any exam other than CAT. Next fifteen minutes, pay attention, you will solve a lot of problems. Even though you are not good in Euler theorem and negative reminder. You can eliminate few incorrect answer options just by looking at the question. That is the power of Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem in reminders is like a digital sum in mathematical operations. Digital sum will never give you incorrect answer option. Will never give you the right answer option. Will eliminate incorrect answer options. Chinese reminder theorem also, it is like this. We have seen the drawback of Euler theorem. Again, I am repeating. Drawback of Euler theorem is, if the power of the numerator is nearer to the quotient function of a denominator or its multiples. Then Euler's method is the best method. So, this is the introduction to Chinese reminder theorem. Very, very important key point is, if the denominator, it is a composite number. Write the number as a product of co-primes. Write the number as a product of co-primes. Please underline this one. It helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options. It helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options. Karthik, most likely today night, you should get an update. If not today, worst case tomorrow morning, you will get an update about the CAT two thousand twenty-one batch. At probably the lowest price in the market. I myself will come and give an announcement and I will take selected serious and sincere students. All the classes are taken by me. All the classes are taken by me. Helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options. Now, what do you mean by composite number written? Twelve is a composite number. It is, the theorem is telling that, don't write it as a product of non-co-prime numbers. Two into six, two and six both are even numbers. So, even numbers can never be co-prime to each other. So, it is nothing but three into four. It is nothing but three into four. If the denominator, it is twelve, do it by three and then do it by four. Do it by three and do it by four. Suppose if it is thirty-six, please don't do it with two into eighteen because it is not product of two co-prime numbers. Don't do it with three into twelve because three and twelve, HCF it is three. Do it with four into nine. Do it with four into nine. I hope you got an idea how you should split the number as a product of factors. How you should split the number as a product of factors? If you want to know that, this is what we did it. What we did in our fourth class textbook, what is the divisibility rule of six? It is the divisibility rule of two and three. So, we used Chinese reminder theorem. But we do not know that the name of the theorem is Chinese reminder. Ten is nothing but two into five. Ten is nothing but two into five. I hope the idea, it is clear. Idea, it is clear. Suppose see here. If you see the eight, eight in how many ways can you write eight as a power of a product of two co-primes, one into eight? And the next one is two into four. Even that is also not possible. Even that is also not possible. Even if you take six twenty-five. Six twenty-five is five power four. One into six twenty-five. Five into one twenty-five. Twenty-five into twenty-five. Twenty-five into twenty-five. This is five into one twenty-five, both are not co-prime. Both are not co-prime. So, four is there. Four is one into four and two into two. You cannot write it as a product of co-primes. That is the reason. Divisibility rule of two, four, eight, sixteen, two power N is different. Divisibility rule for three square, three cube, they are also different. Divisibility rule for five, five square, five cube, so on and so forth are different. So, for a composite number, square of a prime number. I just started with the square of a prime number. Can I take cube of a prime number? Two cube is eight. One into eight, two into four. Both cannot be written as a product of co-primes. You can start with the square, cube of a prime number, fourth power of a prime number, all this one. They cannot be written as a product of co-primes. Simplest is the square of a prime number. Any higher powers also, it cannot be written. For example, seven power four is there, which is forty-nine into forty-nine. Which is one into two or zero one. Seven into three forty-three. These are the factors. These are the factors. So, total five cases we got. One, seven, forty-nine, three forty-three, two four zero one. None of them, HCF it is one. I hope this idea, it is clear. Listen carefully sir. At least as many questions as possible, I will solve it. Suppose. Question is, reminder one. Reminder one, I am not going to solve. Fifty-three power one 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 divided by fifty-one, it is there. Fifty-one, it is there. Options are like this. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. I made a statement. Chinese reminder theorem can help us in eliminating, can help us in eliminating incorrect answer options. Can help us in eliminating incorrect answer options. How it helps us in eliminating incorrect answer options, we will see. This is the point which I said. So, let us see how it is used. We are not, first I will tell you the basic problems. Then I will get into the level two problems. Finally, I will take advanced level problems. Fifty-three power one 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 divided by fifty-one. Step number one. Fifty-one, it is a composite number. So, you can write it as a product of co-primes. Product of co-primes, it is nothing but three into seventeen. Three into seventeen. Step number two. We have to use the divisibility rule of three and the divisibility rule of seventeen. Let me use the divisibility rule of three. Divisibility rule of three. Let me use the divisibility rule of three. Fifty-three power one 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 divided by three. Three eighteens are fifty-four, minus one. Minus one power R D is minus one. What is the positive reminder? Positive reminder, it is nothing but two. Three eighteens are fifty-four, minus one power R D is minus one. Positive reminder, it is nothing but two. So, fifty-three power one 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 and it is of the form, three K plus two. Answer when divided by three. Answer when divided by three. First, I will do. Answer when divided by three, it should be of the form, three K plus two. Answer when divided by three, it gives a reminder two. This when divided by three, it should give a reminder two. Twenty-four, three into eight. Twenty-five, three into eight plus one. Twenty-seven, three into nine. So, the only possibility it is, the only possibility is twenty-six. Answer for this question is twenty-six. Hey Anil sir, what if the answer is thirty-two? Then what we will do is, which I will explain it in the next slide. Then I will do it with the other number, which is seventeen. Then I will find out the reminder of these number. It should be divisible by three and seventeen. It should be divisible by three and seventeen. When divided by three, it gives a reminder two. When divided by three, it gives a reminder two. Answer when divided by three, it should give a reminder two. It should give a reminder two. Anything which is not of the form, three K plus two, it will not satisfy. Again, put a star mark on this. I will come back to you and I will prove you that why the answer when divided by three, it should give a reminder two. Answer when divided by three, it should give a reminder two. I hope the idea, it is clear. First question. First question. How we eliminated answer options? First, I wrote the number as a product of co-prime numbers. Three into seventeen. So, fifty-three power one 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 divided by three, it is plus two. So, when divided by three, reminder two. If there is no option other than twenty-six, all the three can be eliminated. If there is one more option, then I will divide by seventeen. Then I will divide by seventeen. I will do it in a traditional method. My entire scope is how to tell you to eliminate incorrect answer options. How to tell you to eliminate incorrect answer options? I hope this concept is clear. Second one. Second one. For example, reminder. For example, if the question is, three power forty. Three power forty divided by, or we will, we will take, we will take the exact questions only. Suppose thirteen power four hundred divided by one eighty-seven. Eliminating the answer options. First, I will write here. Then I will do it, then it will be clear. So that both the concepts will be clear. Eliminating incorrect answer options. Eliminating incorrect answer options. Just by looking at a question, what you do is thirteen power four hundred. Thirteen power four hundred divided by one eighty-seven. Divided by one eighty-seven. I will do method number two here so that it will be clear. One eighty-seven. One eighty-seven, it is a composite number. So, it is eleven into seventeen. One eighty-seven, it is a composite number. So, it is eleven into seventeen. So, first do it with eleven. First do it with eleven. Thirteen power four hundred divided by eleven. Then do it with seventeen. 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 Thirteen power four hundred divided by eleven. Thirteen power four hundred divided by seventeen. So, this is nothing but, eleven is a prime number. So, thirteen power ten, power forty divided by eleven. This is one. So, answer when divided by eleven. Answer when divided by eleven, it should give a reminder one. If it is seventeen, power will be sixteen. Sixteen twos are, sixteen fives are divided by eleven. Thirteen power sixteen divided by seventeen, reminder is one. That means the answer for this question is, when you divide this by one eighty-seven. One eighty-seven is eleven into seventeen. When divided by eleven, I should get one. When divided by eleven, I should get one. When divided by seventeen, I should get one. When divided by eleven, I should get answer one. When divided by seventeen, I should get one. Eliminate the answer options. Why it is behaving like that? Let me prove it. Thirteen power four hundred, when divided by eleven, the reminder is nothing but one. Thirteen power four hundred, when divided by seventeen. When divided by seventeen, reminder is nothing but one. Both are representing the same number, thirteen power four hundred. So, you can equate it. Eleven A plus one equal and two. Eleven A plus one equal and two. Eleven B plus one, one one cancel. Both of them, it will be equal. At lowest value zero. Both of them, it will be equal. At lowest value zero. So, eleven into zero plus one. That means one is the lowest reminder possible. These number is divisible by both eleven and seventeen. So, divided by one eighty-seven. This perfectly cancel. Thirteen power four hundred. Thirteen power four hundred. When I divide by eleven, I got a reminder one. When divided by seventeen, I got a reminder one. So, both of them are representing thirteen power four hundred. Eleven A plus one equal and two, eleven B plus one, one one cancel. The lowest value is for A zero, B zero. So, eleven into zero plus one. Both of them is giving you the same positive reminder. What is the form of the number when it is divided by two different numbers? And gives the same positive reminder, one plus L C M of eleven and seventeen. So, this is nothing but, this is the form of thirteen power four hundred. Answer is nothing but one. Answer is nothing but one. When divided by eleven, it gives a reminder one. When divided by seventeen, it gives a reminder one. When divided by seventeen, it gives a reminder one. Suppose if the question, answer options are like this. Twenty-three, thirty-five and forty-five and none of this. If the answer options are like this. Twenty-three, thirty-five, forty-five and none of this. Thirteen power four hundred, when divided by eleven, reminder should be one. Answer when divided by eleven, reminder should be one. Answer when divided by eleven, answer reminder should be one. Answer when divided by eleven, reminder should be one. This cannot be the answer. Oh, when divided by eleven, I got a reminder one. Only one I eliminated. Answer when divided by seventeen, I should get a reminder one. Answer when divided by seventeen, I should get reminder one. Seventeen into one plus six. Seventeen into two plus eleven. Answer for this question is nine. You probably no need to equate both of them. If the answer options are not there. If the answer options are not there, you have to equate both the equations. Within ten to fifteen minutes, once I start solving problems, then you will eliminate how you should start solving this problem. When divided by eleven, reminder one. When divided by seventeen, reminder one. When divided by eleven, reminder one. Thirty-five, it is out, which is eleven into thirty-three plus two, eleven K plus two. When divided by seventeen, it should be one. Twenty-three and forty-five. Suppose if there is more than one answer option, which is possible. That, that number probably will be a number greater than one eighty-seven. Further divide, you will get the answer. There are, there is no possibility where you will get two reminders. Where you will get two reminders. Because I am finding the case where the positive reminders are same and the number is divided by multiple numbers. There are no two cases possible where you will get these answer. Where you will find, get these answer. Now, see here. Thirteen power four hundred, eleven A plus one, eleven B plus one. Suppose. This question, let us solve. This question, let us solve. Three power one zero one divided by seventy-seven. Three power one zero one. Five to ten minutes, please keep listening to each and every step how I am solving the problem. Then it will be easy for you. Three power one zero one divided by seventy-seven. Seventy-seven, it is a composite number. So, it is seven into eleven. Seventy-seven, it is a composite number. So, it is seven into eleven. This is nothing but, first I will divide by seven. Three power one zero Three power one-zero-one divided by seven, then I will divide it by, then I will divide it by eleven. Then I will divide it by eleven, then I will divide it by eleven. I will do both, one, it is divided by seven, another divided by eleven. Now if you see here, eleven is the prime number, so A power P minus one, power P. Into three power one, divided by eleven, I hope you are all there with me. A power P minus one divided by P, three power ten divided by eleven, three power ten divided by eleven. It is nothing but one, one into three-three, one into three-three. So answer option, answer options, answer option, when you divide by eleven, when you divide by eleven. How much reminder it should give, eleven B plus three. Again I am repeating, seventy-seven, it is a composite number, composite number is seven into eleven. Three power one-zero-one divided by seven, so we will also do it for seven. Reminder one, seven means again a prime number, three power six, six, sixteen's are ninety-six. Into three power five, divided by seven, this is again one. Three power five is two forty-three, two forty-three divided by seven. Seven threes are twenty-one, thirty-three, seven fours are twenty-eight, what is the reminder? Five, answer option, when divided by eleven, it gives a reminder three. When divided by seven, it gives a reminder five. Go with the answer option, before you equate both the equations, go with the answer option. Three power one-zero-one divided by seven, three power six power sixteen into three power five. Three power one-zero-one divided by eleven, three power ten by eleven, it is one, one into three-three. Answer when divided by eleven, reminder three, answer when divided by seven, reminder five. When divided by eleven, reminder three, when divided by seven, reminder five. Play with the answer options. Let us first equate it, then we will check. Seven A plus five equal and two, eleven B plus three. So seven A equal and two, eleven B plus three minus five minus two. So seven A equal and two, seven B plus four B minus two, four B minus two. Divisible by seven, divisible by seven, four B minus two, it should be divisible by seven. Seven A divisible by seven, seven B divisible by seven, four B minus two, it should be divisible by seven. Four B it is an even number, two it is an even number. So equate it with, not with seven, seven is not possible, equate with the next multiple. So four B equal and two sixteen, B is nothing but four, B is nothing but four. If B is nothing but four, see here, seven A equal and two, forty-four minus two, forty-two. A is nothing but six, A is nothing but six. Substitute any value, you will get the answer. Forty-two plus five, forty-seven, forty-four plus three, forty-seven. In both the cases, you got the answer forty-seven. I hope the step-by-step approach of how to solve the problem, it is clear to you. Suppose if the question is, if the answer options are like this, answer options are like this. Thirty-nine, thirty-three, forty-seven and seventy-seven. Thirty-nine, thirty-three, forty-seven and seventy-seven. If the answer options are like this, answer when divided by eleven, it should give reminder three. It is perfectly divisible by eleven, out. Thirty-nine, eleven into three plus three, out, eleven into seven, out. The only answer is forty-seven, only answer is forty-seven. You came to know the traditional way of solving the question and once you got till here, till here. Please keep an eye on the answer option and try to eliminate the approach. Seventy-seven is seven into eleven, seventy-seven is seven into eleven. First I divided by seven, I got the answer five. Then I divided by eleven, I got the answer three. Three power one-zero-one, when divided by eleven, reminder three. Three power one-zero-one, when divided by seven, reminder it is five. So sir, how are you eliminating, directly writing the answer? B is four, eleven B plus, eleven into four plus three, forty-seven, it is also forty-seven. So three power one-zero-one is nothing but, both the cases, the reminder it is same. And it is a number divisible by seven and eleven. So three power hundred and one is forty-seven plus L C M of seven and eleven, divided by seventy-seven. So this, this will can, get cancelled, answer is forty-seven. Extremely important model, once you know the model, you can solve a lot of negative reminder and then Euler's theorem problems. By using this, I hope the idea it is clear. Three power one-zero-one divided by seventy-seven, seventy-seven, it is a composite number. Chinese reminder theorem states, write the number as a product of co-primes. Write the number as a product of co-primes. Even to the Euler's theorem problems also, you can solve it. Suppose, see here, see this question. These are Euler's theorem problems, now see here. Suppose if the question is, eight power. Suppose if it is, five power thirty-seven divided by sixty-three. Sixty-three, it is a composite number, so it can be written as seven into nine, seven into nine. First do it with seven or do it with nine. Five power thirty-seven, when divided by nine, divided by nine. Nine Toucheant function is six, so five power six power six into five power one by nine. Into five power one by nine, this is one, answer is five. Answer when divided by nine, it should give a reminder five. Answer when divided by nine, it should give reminder five. I hope the idea it is clear. Similarly, you do it with seven also, if there are more than one answer options. Five power thirty-seven divided by seven, so this is nothing but, five power three, power twelve. Into five power one, divided by seven. One-twenty-five, seven, ones are seven, seven, eights are fifty-six, minus one, it is five. So when divided by seven, it gives a reminder five. If I equate both of them, A zero, B zero, so the answer is five. That is what we got the answer, that's what we got the answer. I hope the idea it is clear. Euler's theorem is used when the denominator it is a composite number. When the denominator it is a composite number, I will use Euler's theorem. One-forty-three, one-forty-three, it is nothing but nine into seventeen. One-forty, one-fifty, sorry, not one-forty-three, one-fifty-three, it is nine into seventeen. So this is nothing but, two power hundred divided by nine. Two power hundred divided by nine, which is nothing but, two cube power thirty-three. Into two power one, divided by nine. Two cube power thirty-three into two power one, divided by nine. Eight by nine is minus one, minus one into two, minus two. Positive reminder is seven. Answer when divided by nine, it should give reminder seven. Answer when divided by nine, it should give reminder seven. I hope the idea it is clear, one-fifty-three is seventeen into nine. Two power hundred, two power hundred, it is minus two, so it is plus seven. If there are more than one answer options, if there are more than one answer options. Two power hundred divided by seventeen, which is two power four power twenty-five by seventeen, minus one. So it is sixteen, seventeen B plus sixteen. Answer when divided by nine, it should give reminder seven. Answer when divided by seventeen, it should give reminder sixteen. Just by looking at the answer option, so we can say that sixteen is the possible case. That is possible when A is zero and B is zero. When A is zero and B is zero. I hope this question is clear, this question is also clear. Sir, what if it is the square of a prime number or a cube of a prime number? You can eliminate a lot of incorrect answer options. If the denominator is a square of a prime number or a cube of a prime number, then. You can probably eliminate answer options. Twenty-five, twenty-five is five square, it is the square of a prime number. Can I write like this actually, ideally you should not write. Why? Because H C F of, H C F of five comma five, it is five, it is not one. If I write like this, what probably can happen is, some wrong answer options can be eliminated. If you write like this, you can probably tell which answer options are wrong. You can probably tell which answer options are wrong. For example, the answer for this question is actually, three power twenty, power four divided by twenty-five. This is nothing but one, this is nothing but one. Suppose if I do it with five, if unknowingly if you do it. You can still say which answer options are not possible. Three power four power twenty by five, which is one. So answer when divided by five, it should give a reminder one, it should give a reminder one. If there are options like three, seven, thirteen and none of this. If you happen to write like this, mathematically it is incorrect. Even if you happen to write like this in hurry, it can still give you some push. To say that these answers can be wrong, even a wrong methodology. Can actually tell you which are not possible. Answer when divided by five, it should give a reminder one, all the three are not possible. All the three are not possible, all the three are not possible. In one of the previous year CAT examination question, I did like this, the question also I will. I just made use of some intelligence and I eliminated all incorrect answer options. Twenty-five, options are like this, this is seven, next it is ten, next it is nine, next it is thirteen. Seven, ten, nine, thirteen, one is by using Toucheant function I can do it. So twenty-five, even if in hurry you write five into five. Four divided by five minus one, six divided by five plus one, perfectly divisible. Answer should be perfectly divisible, this cannot be, this cannot be, this cannot be. So the only option possible it is ten. Suppose if there is an option twenty, you can only eliminate three incorrect answer options. Ideally you should not do like this, even in hurry if you do like this, there are still chances. Sometimes when you are playing cricket, unknowingly, you don't intend to play the shot, but. It reached four runs, sometimes when you do an incorrect methodology, still it gives you a ray of hope that. These all are not possible, these all are not possible, all are not possible. Like a Bumrah hitting a fifty runs, like somebody, Ishan Sharma hitting a sixer. Like a Venkatesh Raju coming out with a century, sometimes miracles do happen. So these, one of the miracles, where the methodology is wrong, but it can give some incorrect answer options. Some incorrect answer options, these will only eliminate incorrect answer options. Only eliminate incorrect answer options, sir, why it is still giving you? An incorrect answer options, why? Because twenty-five B plus one we got. Twenty-five is a multiple of five, twenty-five is a multiple of five. Here you will get twenty-five into something plus twenty-five, five is a factor of twenty-five. When you are writing twenty-five into something, there there is a five into something. There there is a five into something, you can be little smart. Suppose if the options are like this, forty-one, forty-three, forty-two. If more than one answer options are not like this, then probably this method should not be used. Should not be used, for example, if the options are forty-one, forty-three, forty-two, thirty-four. Forty-one, forty-three, forty-two, thirty-four, in hurry you did like this. Still it will eliminate incorrect answer options. Six power eighty-four divided by seven, seven ones are seven minus one. Minus one power an even number, it is nothing but one. Answer when divided by seven, it should give a reminder one. Answer when divided by seven, it gives a reminder one. What we will do is, we will write one more option, options, which might be a doubt, a student might get it. So see here, and when divided by seven, it gives a reminder one. Seven into five plus one, not possible, seven into six, not possible. Seven into five minus one, it is not possible. Even though you wrote it as a product of non-co-primes, three answer options you are able to eliminate. Three answer options, you are able to eliminate it. Three answer options you are able to eliminate. I hope the idea it is clear. Writing the number as a product of non-co-primes can help us in telling these answer is incorrect. It will never definitely say that these answer, this is the only answer. Eliminating incorrect answer options, you can write it as a product of non-co-primes. Eighteen, eighteen is two into nine, just five divided by two, reminder one. Answer when divided by two, it should give a reminder one. Immediately, when you get a reminder for one of the factors, check the answer options. Check the answer options, immediately if one of the factors you got the answer. Answer when divided by two, it gives a reminder one. Answer when it is divided by two, it gives a reminder one. Anything which is perfectly divisible by two, that is an incorrect answer options. Morning we solved this question, we got the answer forty-three, we got the answer forty-three. I hope the idea it is clear, you can actually be little smart and you can get the answer very orally. Twenty-five, even if you write it as product of two no co-primes. Twenty-one divided by five, five fours are twenty. Answer when divided by five, it should be of the form one. Any answer option which is, gives a reminder two, gives a reminder three, gives a reminder four or five. These are all wrong answer options. If fortunately, if you got any of these numbers of this form, then. Then probably, it cannot be an incorrect answer option. Again I am writing, please do not get confused. If you, if the denominator it is a composite number, write the number as a product of co-primes. Co-primes, if you write it, you will get the right answer. In case in hurry, if you write it as product of non-co-primes, you can eliminate your incorrect answer option. Second is not an ideal method, because there could be three answer options which matches this form. There could be two answer options, there could be one answer option which does not satisfy. Second is like that, acid test which we do to check whether the rice has got boiled or not. Second one, first do this for ten seconds, if you are able to eliminate three, then tick mark one. If you are able to eliminate one or two, then ignore that method, go to this method. I hope the idea it is clear. Next one, crystal clear clarity in any of the concepts that we are discussing. Not a single doubt, you will get in any of these classes. Now, one-twenty-eight power hundred divided by one-twenty-three. One-fifty-three is seventeen into nine, so this is nothing but reminder. One-twenty-eight power hundred divided by seventeen, seventeen, sevens are one-nineteen. Reminder it is nine, nine power hundred divided by seventeen. Seventeen it is nothing but sixteen, six are ninety-six. Into nine power four, into nine power four. I am using Fermat's theorem, Chinese reminder theorem, you will solve it fast, if you know Fermat's theorem. This is one. This is one. Eighty-one by seventeen. Seventeen fives are eighty-five. Minus four into minus four, it is sixteen. So answer when divided by seventeen, it is nothing but sixteen. Similarly, one twenty-eight power hundred divided by nine. One twenty-eight power hundred divided by nine. Nine fourteens are one twenty-six. Reminder is two power hundred divided by nine. Two power hundred divided by nine. Two cube power thirty-three. Eight by nine is minus one into two power one by nine. Eight by nine is minus one, minus two. So positive reminder it is seven. Positive reminder it is seven. Already we did this question, I think. Nine B plus seven and seventeen A plus sixteen. Answer seventeen A plus sixteen. Till now, whatever problems that we discussed are the basic foundation problems. Basic foundation problems. Another important key point, another important key point which everybody should know who are preparing for competitive examinations where number system is a part of it. Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem is used to find the reminders, is used to find the reminders. Here numerator and denominator, here numerator and denominator may or may not be co-prime. Here numerator and denominator may or may not be co-prime. Here numerator and denominator may or may not be co-prime. May or may not be co-prime. Now if you see, Chinese reminder theorem is not only used when the numerator and denominator are co-prime. Even if they are not co-prime, we can use this logic. That is exactly the reason this fifth question is mentioned. Question is, one, two, three, four, five and so on up to forty. One, two, three, four, five and so on up to forty, which is an even number divided by thirty-six. Divided by thirty-six. These are an even number, these are an even number. H C F of two even numbers, it can never be one, but still you can use Chinese reminder theorem. Thirty-six is nothing but four into nine. Thirty-six is nothing but four into nine. Make the number as a product of two factors. What is the divisibility rule of four? Last two digits should be divisible by four. Forty is divisible by four. Perfectly divisible, so it is four A. It is four A. So the divisibility rule of four is last two digits should be divisible by four. Last two digits should be divisible by four. Nine is some of the digits should be divisible by some of the digits. Some of the digits should be divisible by nine. Some of the digits should be divisible by nine. Some of the digits means one plus two plus three and so on up to forty, which is N into N plus one by two, which is eight twenty. Eight plus two ten. So reminder, it is nothing but one. Reminder, it is nothing but one. Nine B plus one. Nine B plus one. Now, eh, I, when I was taking this class some years before in IIT Delhi, one student asked me a question. Anil sir, here one, two, three, four, sometimes you are taking single digits, ten, twenty, you are taking two digits. Now see here sir. Digital sum of one plus two plus three plus four plus five are one twenty-three plus forty-five are twelve plus three forty-five are one twenty-three plus forty-five. In whatever order you take, digital sum does not change. Digital sum does not change. In whatever order you take, whatever order you take, the digital sum does not change. Check it out. Five plus four, nine, twelve, fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen digital sum is six. Fifteen digital sum is six. One twenty-three plus forty-five, one sixty-eight. One sixty-eight digital sum is six. Three forty-five plus twelve, three fifty-seven. Again, the digital sum is six. One twenty, these already taken, these already taken. So it really does not matter whether you are adding single digits first, then when you are adding two digits. It really does not matter. In whatever the order that you add, some of the digits will not, value will not seen. The, there are two important learnings from this question. Chinese reminder theorem is used when the numerator and denominator may or may not be co-prime to each other. These number is an even number, these are an even number. Still we can use that logic. Thirty-six is four into nine. Divisibility rule of four is last two digits should be divisible by four. Forty is perfectly divisible by four, four A. Nine is some of the digits should be divisible. Some of the digits is one plus two plus three and so on up to forty. Some of the first ten natural numbers is N into N plus one by two. N into N plus one by two. Forty into forty-one by two, which is eight twenty. Eight twenty is eight plus two ten. So answer is nothing but when divided by nine, it is of the form a reminder one. Perfectly divisible. So four A equal and two, nine B plus one, eight B plus B plus one. Divisible by four, divisible by four. B minimum value it is three. Nine threes are twenty-seven plus one. Answer for this question is twenty-eight. Answer for this question is twenty-eight. Four A equal and two, nine B plus one. Four A equal and two, eight B plus B plus one. Four A divisible by four, eight B divisible by four. B minimum it is three. Nine threes are twenty-seven plus one, twenty-eight. Very, very good question sir. Generally in all my classes, the kind of questions which I discuss are at a very good quality questions. I generally do not take simple questions which a student can say it in the answer. If I am taking a one-hour class or a one-and-a-half hour class, at the end of the class, a student should feel that this is how a live class should be. Anything beyond the subject, I am not interested in discussing because you are listening to my live class to learn the subject. I am investing my time to give you the subject which I knew, which can help you to maximize it. That is our end result. We have to be extremely focused towards what we are doing in our life. We have to have that one. If a Sachin is batting, the focus should be there on the ball. If a Messi is trying to hit at the goalpost, his focus should be, is to drive the ball to the destination. Unless you do not have any focus in your life, you will go nowhere in your life. My time is precious. Most, more importantly, students sitting wherever you are there. If you are watching my class, you are watching the class with a trust that by the end of the class, Anil Nayyar sir will teach me something which will make me reach my dream. I want to serve that purpose only and I am only interested. This everything in detail, everything comprehensively. Reminders are taught for two hours or three hours with a lot of time parts. I will never ask any student to enroll the class. I, first I will say, listen to this class. If you enjoy my style of teaching and if you are looking out for one teacher who teaches more understanding-based education, application-based education and has got fifteen years experience in taking CAT classes and was the head of the department. I, generally if you are studying in any college, your H O D will be in early forties. But here I am who was the head of the department for aptitude at the age of twenty-five. That means probably career launcher team must have seen something good in me to give that position. Next one, I hope the idea it is clear. This is a beautiful question sir, let me see. This is another question of the similar model. Seventh we will see, then we will solve a sixth one. This is the question. The best thing about this question is writing, write this question like this. I will tell you why am I writing like this. One, one, two, three, one, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five. Want, in fact, you don't need to write all this. Four, five, six. One, two, three, four, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight till eight, right? It is divided by thirty-six. You will observe a beautiful pattern in this question. Divided by thirty-six. Thirty-six is a composite number. It is a product of two co-primes. Thirty-six is four into nine. Seventy-eight divided by four. Four nineties are seventy-six. Reminder two. Answer when divided by four, it gives a reminder two. Answer when divided by four, it gives a reminder two. Answer when divided by four, it gives a reminder two. Next I should do, what is the divisibility rule of four? Last two digits should be divisible by four. What do you mean by nine? Nine is some of the digits should be divisible by nine. In the divisibility rule, I will discuss in detail why these concepts came into picture. Some of the digit, just now we discussed. You take two digits, three digits, four digits, five digits, six digits, seven digits, eight digits. Answer does not change. So the digital sum is, first it is one. What is one plus two, three? One plus two plus three, six. Here it is increased by two. Here it is increased by three. Here it is increased by four. Increased by five. Increased by six. Increased by seven. Increased by eight. In- increased by eight. This is nothing but plus four. It is ending with four, add four. It is ending with five, add five. Ending with six, add six. Ending with seven and ending with eight. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight and thirty-six. I hope the idea it is clear. This, this cancel, some of the digits nine, cancel, cancel. Twenty-eight digital sum is one. Ten digital sum is one. Here also it is one. Even if you add it, thirty-six plus twenty-eight, sixty-four. Sixty-four plus twenty-one, eighty-five, hundred, one-ten, one-sixteen, one-nineteen, one-twenty. One-twenty digital sum is three. Four A plus two equal and two, nine B plus three. So four A equal and two, nine B plus one. So four A equal and two, eight B plus B plus one. Eight B plus B plus one. This is divisible by four. This is divisible by four. B plus one should be divisible by four. B minimum should be three. B plus one it is four. B minimum it is three. Twenty-seven plus three. Twenty-seven plus three. Answer is nothing but twenty-seven plus three. Answer is nothing but thirty. A very, very high quality CAT level question. Here you can play by using answer option. Answer when divided by four, it gives a reminder two. Answer when divided by nine, it gives a reminder three. Thirty it is. Four into seven plus two. Nine, thirty is nine into three plus three. I hope the idea it is clear. Thirty-six is four into nine. Divisibility rule of four is last two digits should be divisible by four. Divisibility rule of nine is some of the digits should be divisible. One, one plus three. One plus two it is the three. One plus two plus three it is six. Ten, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight and thirty-six. I hope the idea it is clear. Next question. These are beautiful questions sir. Please put a star mark on this question, CAT level question. CAT level question. CAT level question in prime numbers, we will discuss in detail this concept. This is nothing but reminder one. Six, 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 six and so on up to two thousand two times and so on up to two thousand two times. Divided by two thousand two. Divided by two thousand two. Six, 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 six. Written two thousand two times divided by two thousand two. Two thousand two is nothing but two in two thousand one. Two thousand two it is a composite number. Write down the number as a product of co-primes. Two thousand two is two in two thousand one. Two it is an even number. Last digit will be six, so perfectly divisible. Perfectly divisible. So it is two A. Please write down this. Divisibility rule for, divisibility rule, I will discuss in detail. This, I will discuss in detail in prime numbers. Seven, eleven, thirteen, seventy-seven, ninety-one, one forty-three and thousand one. Please write down this. We will discuss comprehensively how to find out the divisibility rule for any prime number in detail. Two thousand two is two into thousand two times, two into thousand one. Two anyway it is an even number, so perfectly divisible to A. We are determining divisibility rule for thousand one. Divisibility rule for thousand one. See here, seventy-seven is nothing but seven into eleven. This is a composite number, it can be written as a product of prime numbers. Ninety-one it is a composite number which can be written as a power, product of two prime number, seven into thirteen. One forty-three it is a composite number which can be written as eleven into thirteen. Thousand one is a composite number which can be written as seven into eleven into thirteen. So the divisibility rule for this number, it is the same as this number, this number. Total seven numbers divisibility rule. Total seven numbers divisibility rule, it is the same. In the class, we will also discuss, in our paid batch, we will discuss the divisibility rule for any prime number. Generally in the textbooks, they will select only some numbers. Actually you can develop your own divisibility rule for any prime number. Divisibility rule for any prime number that is popularly known as theory of osculation. Theory of osculation. Theory of osculation. Very, very interesting theory. We will find the divisibility rule of forty-one, which you will not find it in any of the local textbooks. Divisibility rule of forty-three. Divisibility rule of seventy-three. Divisibility rule for one thirty-seven. Divisibility rule for one thirty-seven. Divisibility rule for any prime number is derived from the concept, theory of osculation. Theory of osculation. Theory of osculation. Now we will write one concept. First write down sir. Divisibility rule for. Divisibility rule for. Seven, eleven, thirteen. Divisibility rule for seven, eleven, thirteen. Divisibility rule for seven, eleven, thirteen. Right? Now see here. What is the Fermat's theorem we discussed? Fermat's theorem states, morning session we discussed Fermat's theorem. What is the Fermat's theorem? Fermat's theorem states, reminder one, A power P minus one, when divided by P, it is one. When A and P are co-prime, when A and P are co-prime and P is a prime number. And P is a prime number. Fermat's theorem. In case if you have not seen the previous three sessions, I would request you to watch it, then you will understand the entire topic. One important subtopic in number system, reminders, I am trying to complete in detail comprehensively. Fermat's theorem states, A power P minus one, when divided by P, it is one. A comma P are co-prime, P is a prime number. For example, reminder one. Ten power six divided by seven, it is one because ten and seven are co-prime. Ten and seven are co-prime. If I call ten power six as ten cube into ten cube. If I call ten power six as ten cube into ten cube. Let me see what is happening for ten power three by seven. Ten power three by seven. Ten power six is nothing but X square. If X square, it is one. X will be plus one or minus one. Let us see. Seven ones are seven-three reminder. Twenty-seven, seven fours are twenty-eight. It is nothing but minus one. I hope the idea it is clear. Ten power six is a ten cube whole square. X square, it is one. So X value will be, either you will get plus one or minus one. We got minus one. See, these are all very, very interesting concepts, sir. Suppose if I take ten power ten divided by eleven, it is one. Ten power ten. So X power five, suppose if I take. For example, if I take ten cube divided by eleven. Eleven ones are eleven, minus one cube is minus one. I hope it is clear, right? Next one. Suppose if I take ten power, I want to correlate it. Ten power twelve by thirteen, it is one. Let me see what will happen. Ten cube by thirteen. Thirteen ones are thirteen, minus three, minus twenty-seven. Thirteen into minus two is minus twenty-six. Reminder is minus one. Ten cube divided by seven is minus one. Ten cube divided by eleven is minus one. Ten cube divided by thirteen is minus one. So ten cube divided by seven, eleven, thirteen. Answer is nothing but minus one. Answer is nothing but minus one. Please make a note. In detail, I will tell you the corollary of Fermat's theorem. In the prime number divisibility rule. In the prime number divisibility rule. Prime number divisibility rule. Let me see the comments. Rahul is saying, speak in Hindi. Cat exam will be completely in English. And more, most importantly, the reason behind. I am speaking in English is, I am not comfortable in Hindi. So in case if you are not comfortable in English, probably I am not the right teacher for you. Saurav is saying, R Y P ebook is app is not working. Kindly speak to the career wheel customer care team. I am a teacher in career wheel operating from Hyderabad. Who will take a classes for career wheel, for CAT batches. I am not an employee of career wheel app. I run my own company that is unenquirer classes. I am starting an selected live batch in association with career wheel on weekends. The complete details, I will announce it very, very soon. So I might take only CAT batches with career wheel. In case if you are an engineering student wanting to get into IIMs. In case if you are an mathematics teacher wanting to start your coaching center. And prepare students for any aptitude examination. Obviously, as a teacher, your level of understanding should be at least five to six-six times than a student level. So it's extremely important for you to join the CAT batch. In case if you are someone who is extremely passionate about teaching. But wanted to learn the course so that you can replicate it and build your own tutorials. Then you can join these CAT batch. You are a student who is preparing for SSC. SSC mains is of little advanced level. And I was just going through the previous year SSC papers. I see a lot of CAT based questions which came in two thousand seventeen. Of course, this year, the paper was more like a tenth class paper, the last slot. So in case if you are someone who wants to learn from the author of nine books. Then you should join for this batch. Or in case if you are someone who just wanted to watch some live classes because your father is paying for your mobile data and your boredom. And people will talk whatever that came into picture, whatever that comes into their mind. Even in the paid batch. When I am taking a class, if there is a doubt, valid doubt with respect to a doubt. I will tell the student name and I will clarify the doubt on doubt. Anything non-academic discussions. Completely, I am not at all interested in spending time. Kindly do not waste my time and I will also not waste your time. If you do not respect the time, a day will come, the society will not respect you. All the people who achieved exemplary success in life respected time. We got twenty-four hours. All the successful people also got twenty-four hours. When the entire world is sleeping, there are people who woke up with a burning desire to achieve their dreams and went on to become greatest inspirations. Let us all be passionate in whatever we are doing. I am extremely passionate about sharing knowledge. And I am sure the students who are watching my classes. Who truly are, wants a teacher who just to focus us on subject. I am sure they will not like any other better class than this in the CAT examination vertical. Please write down, sir. Write down this. I hope this point is clear. Divisibility rule for seven, eleven, thirteen. How it is derived? I am also giving you the derivative. How the concept came into picture? So that in my absence, if you are sharing my logics with somebody. You should be able to look into the eye of a, your friend or a teacher or anybody. And say, this is the proof, I am an unenquirer student. That is the confidence you should have. Reminder one. Ten power three divided by, what is the concept? Concept is, ten power three divided by seven, it is one. Eleven, it is one. Thirteen, it is one, minus one, sorry. It is minus one, not plus one. Seven into eleven into thirteen, it is thousand one. Ten cube divided by thousand one, it is minus one. Directly you can write, thousand by thousand one is minus one. But I want to explain you the factors of thousand one logic also. So if I take, for example. Six is written six times. Six is written six times. Divided by thousand one. These are nothing but six sixty-six into ten cube plus six sixty-six. Divided by thousand one. Divided by thousand one. So the answer is nothing but, these minus one. Minus six sixty-six plus six sixty-six. Minus six sixty-six plus six sixty-six. It is zero. Two conclusions. Two conclusions. Please write down these two conclusions. Any three-digit number. Any three-digit number written even number of times. Any three-digit number written even number of times. Any three-digit number written even number of times. It is always divisible by thousand one. Not only by thousand one, but also the factors of thousand one. Why it is happening? Proof. Why it is happening? Proof. Reminder one. One, two, three, one, two, three. Divided by thousand one. These are nothing but reminder of one-twenty-three into ten power three plus one-twenty-three. Divided by thousand one. These minus one, it is zero. It is zero. Suppose even number of times, two times only we wrote. Let me write four times. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Divided by thousand one. Divided by thousand one. See here. This can be written as one-twenty-three into ten power nine. One-twenty-three into ten power six. One-twenty-three into ten power three plus one-twenty-three. Divided by thousand one. These minus one. Minus one square plus one. Minus one cube minus one. So all of them will get cancelled. All of them will get cancelled. It is just not in solving the question. We will discuss the concept hidden in this question in detail. Any three-digit number. Any three-digit number written even number of times. Any three-digit number written even number of times. It is always divisible by thousand one. Any three-digit number written even number of times. It is always divisible by thousand one. I hope this concept is clear. Suppose, question is. Hundred and twelve, hundred and twelve, hundred and twelve. Hundred and thirteen divided by thousand one. Hundred and twelve, hundred and twelve, hundred and thirteen divided by thousand one. Take a group of three digits. Take a group of three digits, plus, minus, plus, minus. These cancel. One thirteen minus one twelve. One thirteen minus one twelve. Answer is nothing but one. Any three-digit number written even number of times. Any three-digit number written even number of times. It is always divisible by thousand one. This is the first concept. This is the first concept. Second, one more line we will write. I am not interested in just solving the problem. I am interested in making students learn the divisibility rule of thousand one. Learn the divisibility rule of thousand one. Second conclusion. Second conclusion. Any single non-zero digit. Any single non-zero digit. Any single non-zero digit written in groups of six. Any single non-zero digit written in groups of six. Written in groups of six is always divisible by, is always divisible by thousand one. Seven, eleven, thirteen, seventy-seven, ninety-one, one-forty-three and thousand one. And thousand one. Any single, next key point. Any single non-zero digit. Any single non-zero digit. The way I am explaining in the class is the way that you should write down in your notebook. Any single non-zero digit written in groups of six. Any single non-zero digit written in groups of six. It is always divisible by thousand one. Example. Example. Two is written six times. Two is written six times divided by thousand one. Two is written six times divided by thousand one. Take a group of three plus minus, two-twenty-two minus two-twenty-two. It is zero. Groups of six is nothing but a triplet taken twice. A triplet taken twice is nothing but a three-digit number written two times. Three-digit number written two times. Suppose if the question is. Five, 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 five. Five divided by thousand one. Five, 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 five. Triple five, triple five, five. Divide that by thousand one. Take a group of three digits. Take a group of three digits. These both will get cancelled. What is remaining? Five. What is remaining? Five. What is remaining? Five. I hope this concept is clear. Again, I am repeating. Two thousand two, it is a composite number. Two thousand two is two into two thousand one. Thousand one can be written as seven into eleven into thirteen. Ten cube divided by thousand one is minus one. From thousand one, I took seven, eleven, thirteen factors. Any three-digit number written even number of times. Is always divisible by seven, eleven, thirteen. Any single non-zero digit written in groups of six is all, always divisible by thousand one. Is always divisible by, is always divisible by thousand one. I hope this concept is clear. Now we will solve this problem. Every question which I take in the class should add a lot of value to these students. Two into two thousand one. Two into two thousand one. Question is nothing but. Six, 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 six. Six, six. Divided by two into two thousand one. Two into two thousand one. Two into two thousand one. Now see here. Two, unit digit is divisible by two, so it is two A. It is two A. Six is written two thousand two times. Let me write down six times. Plus, minus, it is zero. If six is written. If six is written. If six is written six times. It is divisible by thousand one. If six is written six times. If six is written six times, it is divisible by thousand one. So two thousand two is. Two thou- sorry, two thousand two is six into, six threes are eighteen-twenty. Six threes are eighteen-twenty. Three thirty-three plus four. So three thirty-three groups are there. Three thirty-three groups of six are there. Remaining how many six are left? How many six are left? Four six are left. I hope it is clear. Two thousand two is six into three thirty-three plus four. Three thirty-three groups are there of six. So any single non-zero digit written in groups of six. It is perfectly divisible. Remaining it is four divided by thousand one. So take a group of three digits. Six sixty-six minus sixty. Answer for this question is six sixty. Beautiful question which explains the concept of divisibility rule for thousand one. I hope it is clear. Let me see. Let me see the question. Smam Vivekananda says. Sir, what is the value of root four? When we take in number line, is the number plus two or why not take minus two? Square root. What is the square root function? Root of X. X should be greater than or equal and to zero. X should be greater than or equal and to zero. X square equal and to four. X is a real number. X is a real number. X is a real number. Here X is a positive real number. The domain is changing, right? So root of four, it is two. But two square equal and to four. Minus two square is nothing but four. Because X is a real number. Under root function, under root inside, you cannot take imaginary numbers. You cannot take negative numbers. You cannot take number numbers. I hope it is clear. So I think Nithendra has already helped. I hope the idea it is clear. Yes, SSC students who want a very high-level content can also come out with a CAT batch. I hope these, it all depends upon the, in the functions class. Only when you understand the difference between domain, co-domain and the range. This question is based on the domain and the range of a given value. Domain and the range of a given value. I hope it is clear. So this question we have already seen. These also we have seen. Let us see. Triple one, triple one is nothing but thirty-seven into three. So these are nothing but reminder one. Seventeen power thirty-six plus nineteen power thirty-six divided by thirty-seven. Divided by thirty-seven. These one and it is also one. One plus one, it is nothing but two. It is nothing but two. So one when divided by thirty-seven, reminder it is two. Similarly, reminder one. Seventeen power thirty-six plus nineteen power thirty-six divided by three. Three six are eighteen minus one, power even plus one. So it is two. So it is three B plus two. Thirty-seven A plus two equal and to three B plus two. A is zero and B is zero. So answer for this question is two. Answer for this question is two. I hope the idea it is clear. Only the class is based on a Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. My next class will be an. My next class will be an announcement of CAT two thousand twenty-one. CAT two thousand twenty-one live batch. CAT two thousand twenty-one live batch announcement. Probably the best batch a student can join to learn all the possible concepts of quantitative aptitude and L R D I. quantitative aptitude and L R D I, quantitative aptitude and an L R D I. At a CAT level, if you can probably go through at least seventy-five percentage of the course, then you are at a very, very high level compared to a lot of other friends in your circle. So I hope you enjoyed Chinese reminder theorem. Next I will come live announcing it as a special CAT two thousand twenty-one live batch. Kindly subscribe to our channel and kindly wait for the announcement to happen. I will try to give at a CAT price, at a lowest price so that maximum students can get benefit from it. Thanks a lot. With love, get inspired, keep inspiring, an outlier.